Good morning. It is Thursday, February the 13th, 2025, and this is the Committee of the Whole Meeting of the Sunshine Coast Regional District. I'd like to acknowledge that the Sunshine Coast Regional District is on the territories of the Seashell and Squamish Nations. We have an agenda before us. Does anybody want to monkey with it? Not seeing a lot of activity. Could we have a motion to adopt the agenda? Moved, seconded, all in favor? Any opposed? Great, got an agenda. First item up is correspondence policy. And over to C A O.
Thank you, Chair. So this particular policy is in front of you out of the Policy Review Committee. And so it was identified to have some revisions, which have been provided in track changes for you. So happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Yes, I wanted to say that one thing I like about this policy is that there are specific timelines in it. Like it says, there will be a response within five working days or 10 working days, whatever. That I like that specificity. Oh, I manage that. But I at least had some questions about who makes the decisions. And I understand that there is a related procedure. So who makes decisions about who sees what? Is that in the procedure or is it in the policy?
It is in the procedure.
So the suggestion was made to defer the full discussion of this policy until we also have the procedure and we can look at them both together. My other suggestion is that we pick a few examples of correspondence that we have received and then walk it through the procedure and the policy so that we can understand how it would be treated. And then everybody can, you know, see the machinery work and see if the process is what we need. So do we need a motion to defer this to a future meeting? Director Toth, what are you moving?
Thank you, Chair. I guess I will be moving that we defer this item pending the receipt or to a future meeting pending the receipt of the procedure for discussion.
Correspondence procedure. Okay, is there a second for that motion? That is seconded. I had one other question, by the way. On page six, there's a reference to a director email management policy. I meant to look up my Bible of board policies, but do we have a director email management? I guess I should go read it. Any further discussion on the motion on the floor? Seeing none, I'm calling the motion. All those in favor? Any opposed? That passes unanimously. Great. Look at that, 10 minutes and we got something done already. 4.2 Corporate Greenhouse Gas Emissions Target Policy. And over to our manager, Sustainable Development.
Thank you, Chair. The policy before you is a response to the targets that the board adopted and the Corporate Carbon Neutrality Plan that the board adopted. So it was meant to operationalize those two previous documents into something that would be user-friendly and useful moving forward. Staff are happy to take any questions. Should you have any?
Director Gabius.
Thank you, Chair. I'm just curious as how this is going to be rolled into our reports or how are we going to interact with this policy at the board level?
Great question. Over to staff.
Like all policies, the staff will refer this policy when evaluating options moving forward. One of the principal mechanisms is the annual reporting of corporate greenhouse gas emissions. And what this policy outlines is some additional work into that to more specifically outline pathways on how we can get closer to these targets as time progresses on that annual reporting basis.
Yes, Director Lee.
Thank you, Chair. My question is around the fact that we don't really have a baseline set. And we also don't know the cost of what we could be committing ourselves to here. I was wondering if I am missing something about that. I'm always a little apprehensive of approving something when the broad cost is not understood. Any comments on that? Any thoughts?
Thank you, Chair. No, the costs aren't specifically outlined. The landscape is evolving. So as different assets reach end of life, the technologies available may have changed than what is available today in terms of technological feasibility as well as price. The 2023 staff report where the targets were identified attempted to outline the implications of the different target options at the time. So that could be something that is explored further on the annual reporting of our corporate emissions to the extent where that analysis is available.
Follow-up.
Thank you, Chair. So the concept is when some of our infrastructure is failing and we have to update it, we just update it to the most appropriate solution. In other words, if we lost an electric heater, we might put in a heat pump, that kind of thing. Is that the concept here?
Thank you, Chair. That is part of it. The items under Section 4 of the policy also speak to some other things. So in some instances, it may involve fuel switching, which may require some feasibility studies and some engineering design beyond like-for-like replacement. It also addresses how we discuss and approach new buildings. And there's another component here around efficiency and maintenance to optimize facility performance, energy performance.
Okay, Director Toth.
Thank you.
Oh, C A O, beg pardon.
So I just wanted to also identify that when we're revising our capital renewal plans, so that's like-for-like infrastructure, we are starting to, and this policy would help inform, how we revise those capital plans. And so the associated funding would be updated when we would review those plans. And so definitely, this policy would guide that next work, which it's not specific right now. We do have some things in the Corporate Energy and Emissions Plan. But this would inform how we would then treat some of the renewal. And so right now, it's ad hoc. And so this would guide how we would actually integrate the capital renewal going forward, knowing that we have a target.
That makes sense. Director Toth.
Thank you, Chair. Starting on item, I guess, 4.1 on page 15, right at the top there, it talks about, you know, G H G emissions being calculated and publicly reported annually. I'm just looking for some clarity. Are we, because when you look at the scope part, like 2.1 through 2.5, it talks about some of the categories. And so when we report on emissions, I understand this is new and under development still. Is the intention that it's sort of an aggregated total? Or are we actually going to be able to see like what our fire protection G H Gs are versus, you know, and, you know, whatever we're doing in drinking water and wastewater, G H G emissions from those activities? Because I think that will help guide future boards into where they need to be making the investments to make the most impact on G H G emissions. And then I guess the follow-up comment I wanted to make is that we do have, you know, other funds that become available to us when we're doing this work, like L G cap. Right, we're spending L G cap funding this year on electric vehicle, like fleet infrastructure, which is great news. But yeah, we definitely need to be tracking it and reporting it in order to really take advantage of a lot of these funding opportunities now in the future. Thank you.
Great question. Over to staff. Are we going to track by department or division?
Yes, as a climate actions, Climate Action Charter signatory, we've been tracking our corporate greenhouse gas emissions for a long time in the CARAT program and now in the L G cap program. And we do have that greater resolution of data in our greenhouse gas accounting system. Traditionally, we've just reported it at a higher level of fleet and buildings and contracted services. But in future reports, greater detail can be broken down.
I think that would be a great idea because I would like to understand, you know, where the biggest gains are to be made, would be a way of putting it. Director Ingster.
Thank you, Chair. I look at these figures being presented and I am aware, as are many of us, of the targets that have been put forward by provincial, national, and international governments. And over the last number of years, and the targets that they present over the last number of years were in dire stress or not being met, not even close to being met. And those targets are much less than this. So I see this as very aspirational and good on us to have these targets. But I will, I would request, and I think it's already been indicated, that we need to ask staff to provide a lot of information on these targets. 20% is large, the additional piece, 45% by 2030 reduction. I'm looking at these figures and I'm very confused because we are not meeting these figures and we have not been provincially, nationally. Even with committed provincial governments, we're not meeting them. And that doesn't even speak to when we go way off kilter with governments in other parts of Canada that are all about the dollar and the money that we need to make. Where it's always, this is always about money. And that's what's going to kill us. But if we step away from that and from that distraction to focus on what's happening here, if we are committed to this, we need to, we do need to, and we're having difficulty with this, reprioritize some more focus and spending. Or we're not going to do it. We're not even going to come close. And I don't want to be a wet blanket, but it's just that we need to make some big commitments. If we are in the process, and Mr. Shea is in the process of reevaluating our vehicle policy and rightsizing our vehicles, and that is a policy that he has, and I doubt has the power, not that I'm undermining his power, but I doubt he's able to tell the organization, don't buy that, don't buy that. We have a problem. As soon as we go and buy a large truck that we think we need to service our organization or a dump truck that we need to service our organization, and we don't have nodes of service and we send our workers, like we have to now, all over the coast to do work. Our largest, and I would say if there was an analysis done, one of our largest pollutants is our transportation. We know this at the D O S. It's not necessarily the buildings because we need to make improvements there as well. Solar, in-ground heating systems. Anyway, there's so many things we need to do. But if we can't deal with our transportation at the regional district as well as looking at changes in our buildings, solar on the roofs and the heating systems, this target is very aspirational. And coming full circle in this conversation so that directors are seeing, am I making a point? Is I need more information going forward? Because I'm going to say to us, by '26, and I appreciate, and I know that Mr. Shea, that's why he's here, because he's here to tell us we need to do this because a number of us know we need to do this. I think we're going to hit 3% to 5% by '26. 20 is huge. I want to be wrong with all these predictions I'm making. I think we're going to have difficulty getting to 8% by '30. And I want to be wrong. I want you guys to all tell me I'm wrong, and I want to be wrong. This is one of the things I want to be wrong on. But I have some real concerns. And I hope we can put our heads down and make some adjustments over the next number of years because we're not getting there. Thanks.
I'm going to jump in as, so we have two separate discussions going on here. One is the policy, which will help staff to make decisions about, say, purchasing new assets. And that's good. But the policy does not include the targets. And the target is, in my view, a separate discussion that we really need to have. Because if you look at page 106 of our agenda, it says corporate emissions for, we don't expect any significant change in corporate emissions between 2024 and 2025. And if you look at the graph at the top of page 107, it shows that we have plateaued on emissions reductions. And I don't see much of a chance that we're going to get anywhere near the 20% target for 2026. I agree with you, Director Ingster. So I mean, we've just passed a budget where we're hiring more staff, we're buying more vehicles, we're buying honkin' big fire trucks, which are not electric and probably can't be anytime soon. And we're undertaking a lot of projects, which involve G H G emissions, like the Langdale Well Field. So I think in future, not today, we actually need to sit down and discuss our targets. Are they just there to look nice? Or do we actually have any intention of meeting our targets? Or can we meet our targets and still deliver the services that we are committed to deliver? So I would be interested in having that further discussion. I see Director Toth's hand.
Thank you, Chair. Just perhaps a clarification from staff because I've now had two directors bring up the targets conversation. And I'm pretty sure that these target reductions were part of the corporate emission plan that the board adopted already. And if they are, if staff could remind us when we adopted those, that'd be great. Thank you.
Yes, please remind us what we're doing.
Thank you. The Corporate Carbon Neutrality Plan was adopted in February of 2023. And the targets, which was an action out of that plan, was adopted in, I believe, the end of December 2023.
Yeah, I do think that we should revisit this, Director Toth.
Thank you, Chair. I 100% agree. It's entirely worth a frank conversation among the board and the senior management team about what is attainable. I just wanted to flag that we technically did adopt numbers. So these aren't coming from nowhere. Thanks.
They are not coming from nowhere. Director Ingster, is your hand residual?
No. Thank you, Chair. Speaking to, I mean, we're going to diverge now to looking at our targets in a sense as a discussive point and how we need to perhaps analyze those targets and look at ways we can make those needed adjustments going forward, which are going to be quite a challenge. But as a corollary to what I was saying earlier, it's, this is a massive undertaking. I know I'm not popular at cocktail parties, but I've had to make, I made individual changes that I know that Director Toth has noticed with just even transportation, which was a huge cost in order to be more committed. And I know there's another board member who doesn't even have a vehicle to show that they're committed to environmental change. But other than that, my individual consumption level I've reduced hugely. And my footprint is small. Like I said, I'm not popular at cocktail parties. But this is a huge undertaking that we need to be committed to. Thank you.
Thank you. I agree. Director Gabius.
Yeah, thank you, Chair, and thank you, Director Ingster, for the comments and discussion. I just realized that we haven't moved the recommendations. So I will move the recommendations on page 11.
Is there a second? Can I see a second?
Quick question while I got a mic. There is a report coming soon, I believe, about the climate lens and how we apply the climate, like the strategic lens to our decision-making. Am I correct that this is upcoming?
I'll go over to staff.
Maybe I'll do my own. I'll check it myself. I feel like that's.
Well, I was going to ask staff, what is the best way to bring forward this discussion about our targets? The most appropriate way in terms of committee, workshop, timing, et cetera?
Well, I don't want to put words in the director's mouth, but what I'm hearing is some threads of wanting to align this policy with our corporate energy emission plan targets and to get some alignment with potential projected costs to bring us to the 20% and to the subsequent 40%. And so some correlation as to, you know, what would actually take us as well as what we're already doing in order to bring us to those particular targets. And so I think there's some background that needs to supplement the policy, is what I'm hearing the directors want to see, is what decisions have you already made that correlate to this policy? And so that's not in front of you right now. And so this policy could be referred with bringing some of those subsequent items to substantiate the policy.
I'm going to go to Director Toth.
Thank you, Chair. And I've taken a note here for myself and Director Gabius to follow up with the C A O because, you know, we're trying to be very strategic about what workshops we do have as a board to increase our understanding and also make sure we're using everybody's time effectively. We don't see a whole lot of Manager Shea at these meetings. And I can't think of much that we do that would be more important organizationally than a conversation about G H G emissions and potential reductions and what that looks like for the organization. So I've made the note for us to have a conversation about maybe doing a workshop at some point in the future just for a greater understanding collectively. Thanks.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea. We need to understand the situation better and not simply ask for a report because I don't think that would be a really good use of everybody's time. Director Bax.
Yeah, listening to the conversation around the table, I feel this policy is a little premature. There's some more information that needs to be brought forward. I don't think I can support the adoption of it as it is. I believe in the aspirations of it. And I know that there's some trepidation about the financial implications as well. But there are, there's some pieces of the puzzle missing and there's some understanding that we do not have. So as to the motion on the floor, I have to vote against it.
So I'm just going to clarify, and perhaps staff can help me here, that we are not, the policy does not include the targets. The policy gives direction to staff to look for more energy-efficient ways of doing business and reducing our G H Gs, does it not? Top of page 15. It does have the numbers right in it.
Not to say we can't amend it.
Beg your pardon. We can amend it. If we have no policy, then staff have no direction to pursue G H G reduction. So I think we personally, I think we are better off to pass this policy and then revisit it in the light of further information about what is realistic for us to do in the next few years. I'm going to go to Director Ingster.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Almost in echo, almost is what you're saying. I will be supporting this. I will be supporting anything going forward that we are committed, if we are committed to do, to reduce our G H G and our environmental effect on the planet. And I'll keep supporting that. So I'll be supporting it.
Beautifully clear. Thank you. Director Lee.
I haven't made up my mind. The problem I have is that if we set a 20% target by that and we're serious about it, then our spending has to follow that. And that would be a huge commitment. We, I doubt like hell, we could do anything else but fight this to get a 20%. As Director Ingster pointed out, when you look at what's causing the G S G emissions that we can control, it's transportation. And those are a very high expensive item to start changing if we're trying to make the 20%. And I don't know what the measurement is either. Is it 20% for what? Because we're expanding. So is it 20% for transportation? Is it 20% for our existing buildings? Is it 20% overall? I don't know the measurement criteria. And so I don't, I really have trouble. Like I started out saying I had a problem. Love the goal, agree we need to do it. The question is, what do we need to do and when? And how much is it going to cost? So I'm not sure how I'm going to vote, but I just thought I'd mention, if I vote one way, you guys will know why.
I'm going to go over to staff first to clarify that I believe we already set the targets. So another option might be to pass the policy without the specific targets in item four at the top of page 15.
That is correct. Thank you, Chair. The targets were adopted in December of 2023 and they are already a board directive that is guiding staff. The policy aims to operationalize that. And in the analysis behind the targets, a lot of the initial 20% reduction was based on the heat pumps at the Seashell Aquatic Center, which have just been commissioned last week. So the analysis that went into the original targets is underway. Those things are underway in the initial steps. And staff would be happy to bring back more detailed information on the implications and the pathways to achieve this as outlined in the policy when the 2024 emissions are going to be evaluated in the coming months.
Excellent. Thank you. Director Bax.
I don't want my previous statements to be misconstrued as not wanting to see us reduce our carbon footprint. I think it is, as Director Ingster has said, it is one of the biggest challenges we have as a species at the moment. And I'm very much in line with that. I'm just worried that the policy itself was flawed. But it is, as we've, as Manager Shea has just stated, the targets are already baked into the pie. And so I remove my previous hesitancy to support this.
Okay. Would anyone else like to agonize about the climate? Not seeing any further hands. I'm going to call the question on the motion on the floor. All those in favor? Any opposed? And that passes. Thank you very much. Thank you very much, Mr. Shay. And we hopefully will have a workshop at a future time.
Hope so.
Next up, everybody's favorite company, Microsoft. So much for buying Canadian. Over to staff, please.
Thank you, Chair. This report requests approval to execute a contract with Online Business Systems for one-year supply of Microsoft 365 licensing up to a maximum value of $208,000 before GST. Our current licenses expire March the 16th, and this is the fourth year with our provisioning through Online Business Systems on a five-year plan with them. The total costs are as expected and within budgets.
Thank you. Words that we love to hear. Director Toth?
Thank you, Chair. While Microsoft is not technically a Canadian company, they actually do maintain a massive presence in Vancouver. So they are a pretty major employer here in Canada, fairly locally. We probably have residents on the coast that work for them. With that, I'm, I'm happy to move the recommendations on page 17 as presented.
And I see a seconder. I don't see any hands for discussion, so I'm going to call the question. All those in favor? Any opposed? That passes. Thank you very much. That was nice and short and sweet. And next up, we get to fire trucks. Everybody's favorite. Over to Chief Michael Lynn Daly. Beg pardon.
Thank you. I'm accompanied by Chief Higgins here. This is a, requesting a contract amendment for some much-needed upgrades on command vehicles that we have received. We're both happy to answer any questions that you may have on it.
Okay. We have reports. We have recommendations. Director Bax?
Thank you. I'd just like to put forward the motion as it appears on page 19 of today's agenda.
And I see a seconder. Any discussion? Director Toth?
Thank you, Chair. Seeking clarity on the voting on this, because it's two different services. What's listed on the cover page doesn't include Roberts Creek, even though Roberts Creek is one of the fire trucks in, or one of the vehicles involved. Roberts Creek is a single participant service. Does that make this voting all? Thank you.
We would add D to the voting on this. So it would be Gibson's E, F, and D. That was an omission.
Thank you very much for catching that. So we have a motion on the floor made by Area D, so we're safe there, and seconded by F, so we're all good. So I'm calling the question. All those in favor? And that passes. Thank you very much. It's just the one, isn't it? No, there's two.
Four, five.
Yeah. There's the second one. Oh, hello. Don't mind me. Good morning, Chief. Your turn.
Thank you. Good morning. Yeah, in front of you is a staff report for an amended contract value for our new heavy rescue. As, as a report, we'd just like to increase the cost within the budgeted amount for a rescue for some amendments to it.
Thank you. Director Gabius?
Yes, hello. Thank you, Chair. Nice to see you, Chief Daly. I will move the recommendations on page 22, and I just want to bring everybody's eyes to page 24. An adjustment was made to the apparatus, removal of a fossil fuel generator, replaced with a battery-powered inverter combo. How about that?
Yes, and I'll also point out that Raph and I have been in conversations to probably put out our bid for a new command vehicle this year to make it the first fire command vehicle to be electric. So we're working on those proposals now as well. So we're working that way.
That is super good news. Thank you very much. And, and that motion was seconded? That's great. Not seeing any further discussions, I'm going to call the question. It's voting all. All those in favor? Any opposed? Nobody's opposed, of course. Thank you very much. Moving on to SCADA. Who is up for SCADA? Ah, GM Rosenbaum.
Thank you. My manager is not there yet, so I'll take a crack at it. The, the report in front of you is for a contract amendment for our contract to upgrade our SCADA system. We went out for a request for proposals for, for a four-phase project, and ultimately we only awarded the contract for the first three phases. That work is completed, or is about to be completed, and we are very satisfied with the performance of the contractor. So we're now asking board approval for the fourth task of the project. I should know that there's additional funding also approved as part of the 2025 budget process for even a fifth phase, but that was not part of the original RFP, so we cannot award that work at this point in time. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Director Toth?
Thank you, Chair. And thank you, GM Rosenbaum, for, for heading off the question that I, I had. So yeah, with the funding announced, or the funding approved for 2025, I assume, given the value of that funding and that it wasn't part of the original contract, that will be a separate tender that, that has to go out just from a procurement perspective. But yeah, with that, I'm, I'm happy to move the recommendations that are here on page 25.
Thank you. And I just quickly, is there a reason that Seashell is not voting on this? The, the voting says A, B, D, E, F, and Gibson's. Corporate officer?
Apologies. Yeah, it, it should, it should be Seashell, not Gibson's. Another error.
Ah, that makes far more sense.
His motion stands.
His motion stands. Do we have a seconder? And that's seconded. Thank you very much. Not seeing any hands up, so I'm going to call the question. All those in favor? Right? Anyone opposed? No. Great. That passes. Thank you very much. Okay. Next item up is director constituency and travel expenses. It is a report for information, but since it's our expenses, we may have questions or comments or observations. Over to staff. Do we need an introduction?
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, this is just the regular quarterly report. I will note those, this report was delayed. It was originally scheduled to go to the January meeting, but we delayed to ensure we could capture all the expenses for 2024. We've supplemented this report with an appendix, which breaks down the expenses, both constituency and travel expenses by function. That's general government and electoral area services functions, and also the funding apportionment for those services is included as well. Thank you.
Yeah, I really appreciate the appendix. It, it helped break it out and make it more understandable. We did pass an increase in the travel budget, I believe, at, at budget. Does anybody remember how much we increased it? Because there had been significant increase in travel costs.
Yeah, I think the original proposal was 8,000, and it was potentially reduced. I don't know if that motion passed, though, so we'd have to circle back.
I suppose my question is, and I don't have an answer to it, is how are, how can we best manage our travel expenses? Like, I personally would function best with a budget that I could then, you know, calculate out where I'm going and what it will cost. But it's difficult to set an amount for each director, because we live in different places. We have different travel costs. We have different situations. So having, there, there is no one-size-fits-all solution. So I think, I think it behooves us to watch our costs as much as we can and work with staff to see if particularly some of the hotel costs are getting a little outrageous, I think. Director Ingster?
Chair, yeah, we, we had a, we had an anomaly. I think in all governments, we're dealing with this the last couple of years. And it's just affects things. UBCM in Vancouver two years in a row. And that affected the budget because of the expense of those hotels there. Staff would know now what that may cost this year, because it won't be there. However, there's a travel, there's regional travel cost to where I think it is this year, which is Victoria, isn't it? So that changed, the travel cost is a little bit more, but I think the hotel cost is much, is less to the degree where the travel cost won't affect the overall budget. So it's, that's an anomaly, and that probably affected it this year. Vancouver is very expensive. And AVICC is an example as well, Victoria versus Nanaimo. So you, you need to take that into account, although Vancouver's much more convenient and it's very expensive. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other comments or thoughts? I really, again, I appreciate the appendix A and look forward to seeing that breakout in future so that we can help manage our costs. Director Toth?
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, I'm just looking at the sort of breakout of the, the Function 130 costs and collection, or taxation, funding apportionment. And you guys actually did pretty good. When you look at the 130, like the UBCM, AVICC expenses versus the taxation, like they're, they're pretty, they're pretty bang on. It's all of the, the general government stuff that we've got to, I think, really keep a, a tight rein on. I just, for my own clarification, the, the Function 110 apportionment is based on assessments for each area? Okay, I'm getting a head nod there. So yeah, I think it's interesting that, you know, considering there's two directors from the District of Seashell, Area A is actually the highest contributor to the general government funding apportionment, followed by the District of Seashell for the, for each of us. So it's an interesting thought. Thanks.
Followed by the Town of Gibson's. But yeah. Okay. Have we beaten this topic to death? Okay. If, if that's everything, then I think we will move on to the subject of regional district debt as of the end of December 2024. And is there an introduction to this topic?
Just for information, Chair. Thank you.
Thank you very much. On page 34, the list of upcoming borrowing on issued debt as $30 million. Take the number $30 million and add it to the graph on page 35, and you notice that the graph now needs to go just about right off the page. And that, you know, that's the tsunami coming at us, is, is we simply have a lot of projects and a lot of infrastructure costs that are coming at us. And this is, this is before we consider a new bus yard and a few other big-ticket items. So I find it frankly alarming, but there it is. Least interest rates are coming down. Director Toth, and then perhaps CIO?
Thank you, Chair. I just, I just wanted to highlight that of that $30 million, almost $20 million of it is water-related projects. Just doing the quick add-up of that table on 33 and 34. And so I think if we're talking in the community about the debt we're taking on, I, I'm okay talking about us taking on, you know, two-thirds of the new debt that we're taking on to deal with our water problem. I know, you know, municipalities have a, a funding, a debt ceiling based on servicing costs. I know that the regional district doesn't technically have that limit, but I know that our finance staff are really quite consistent in making sure that we stay under that municipal limit anyways, because it's best practices. So anyways, I, I have no problems defending the, the debt level in the, in the quest for water. Thanks.
Thank you very much. CIO, did you have a comment? No? Okay. Over to Director Bax?
Yeah, I have to echo Director Toth's, that we are spending the money on things that our constituents are demanding. And it's not, it's nothing new. If you look at the, the level of debt in 2007, it was very similar. And so this is just a, a cycle, I think, that we're going through. But I, as far as I know, this is, this is, you know, we're, we're spending money to get the job done.
Yes, we need to borrow. That's the way it goes. We can't just, you know, tax everybody to death all in one big go. Director Ingster?
Yeah, just, thanks. Yeah, 2007 rec facilities, 2020s, water. It's funny how they're kind of the same. Thanks.
All right. Not going there. I neglected to ask for a motion to receive all reports and communications. Could I move seconded? All in favor? Thank you. We got that done. Okay, 10:30. We're rocking here. Preliminary property assessment impacts. Over to financial staff.
Thank you, Chair. So our manager of budgeting grants can answer any questions. So this one here is typically a report we provide ahead of the round two budget deliberations. I think with timing this year of our round one and getting our assessment values, we're a little bit out of lockstep. So these have been integrated into our revised taxation numbers that have been presented. So we try to explain as far as what the implications of changes in assessments per the property classes and the various areas do changes to your taxation. So happy to answer any questions and noting that these are not the final. Those will come March 31st.
Thank you very much. Do any of the directors have questions? Director Toth?
Thanks, Chair. It's, it's just a curiosity more than anything. I'm looking at page 39, Table 3. I read this as saying that the Sunshine Coast only has $2.3 billion worth of property, which is a big number, don't get me wrong. But I'm actually surprised at how not big of a number that is. Do we really only have $2.3 billion, billion dollars worth of real estate here? Thanks.
I certainly can't answer that question. Anybody want to try that? I certainly can't answer that question. Anybody want to try that?
So I just wanted to clarify, that was table three that you were looking at?
Yeah.
Yeah, so that's the converted value, actually. That, um, that converts the assessment value based on the various different property classes that you see there. So, no, it, it's not, it's not $2 billion, it's, it's, it's more than that. Yeah.
Thank you, but you, you can see from that table that the vast majority of our property value is in residential properties. And that is also reflective of our heavy reliance on residential property taxes. Director Stanford?
Sorry, can I just get an explanation further about what a converted value is? What does that mean?
Sure. So as prescribed by the province, each property class is prescribed a value. Yeah, sorry, sure, yeah.
Yeah, so the, we used to explain this in here, so we kind of moved away from it because it's a little bit complicated. So what happens is that the property, uh, the province assigns various different multipliers to various property classes. So what happens is for us to be able to calculate the tax rates. So, uh, we have to then reduce the various types of assessment down to those multipliers. So residential is one times the rate, uh, business is 2.45 the rate, utilities is three point something a rate. And so you have to then take the overall assessment and convert them down to those various property classes. And so it then gives you how you're going to multiply the tax rates in the backend. I know it's hard to follow, so that's why we don't really delve into those. But the converted values is really what's important as far as how it gets apportioned amongst yourselves and how it then affects the various rate classes. And so that's why we focus on the various converted value rates because then it shows how it then affects your various tax rates compared to your neighbor. So on table two, for instance, um, you've got overall change in tax apportionment due to assessments. And so essentially it just shows you that in Area A, you'll get a reduction of 1.3 because your assessments compared to the average change on the overall Sunshine Coast have decreased less than the average. However, conversely, in Area F, you had an increase of 1.73 and that's the same for SNGD because they probably have an increase in, say, business classification. So that's why they are seeing a significant increase. So essentially that's the various multipliers for your taxation rates. In here too, I think we do show how much your overall tax, or we have multiple billions of dollars of overall, but that's a one-to-one relationship and just not really useful in providing this type of information, so we don't focus on it.
Wonderful. Uh, Director Toth?
Thank you, Chair. Just in, in listening to the, the conversation, the explanation and then the contemplating it here, I'm realizing that table one at the top of page thirty-eight talks about assessed value cumulative being more, you know, $21 billion. And that sounds like a much more realistic number for the Sunshine Coast to me. So, um, complex. I appreciate that there are people that get degrees in this sort of stuff. And, uh, thanks to staff for, for trying to render it into something that us flebes can understand.
Yes, and I look at this and I see that, that property assessments are not skyrocketing the way they were a few years ago. They've, they've basically plateaued. Uh, Director Lee?
I'd just like to check that my understanding is correct. If we look at a service where all rural areas are in the service, Area A would be paying 15.4% of the money that's been collected for that service. And that's, uh, so in fact, I'm paying a little bit more this year then, if it's an all-in service. Is, is that correct? Well, all-in as in all rural areas in.
Is the question, Chair, if all things equal, that Area A would be their percentage? I don't have that in front of me here. I think in the table, I'm not sure, Alex, if you've... The other thing that factors in is growth. And that's why we show the non-market change as well as the market change, which will also create some more elasticity within your service, which actually makes the rate smaller. And so that's why on the impact of property assessment change based on growth for 2025 is also factored into there. The 15.3 is, I think, the number that Director Lee was referencing. And so that is just the, the impact. Yeah, you'd, you'd pay 15.3% more because of the growth in your area.
Yeah, just using mine as an example. My total assessments went down in relation to everybody, but my growth was higher. So there's, uh, that's what you're going to end up with. That's a good figure once you realize what it is.
Wonderful. Just when I thought I understood it, now I'm pretty sure I don't. But we will continue, I think. I see no further hands and we have a number of Q4 reports to review. Before we go into the quarterly reports, does anybody want to take a five-minute break? Okay, let's do that. So we will come back at 10:40. We are at item 4.10 on the agenda, which is the Corporate and Administrative Services Semiannual Report. Is there anything that staff wish to say to introduce the report?
Just happy to answer questions. Thank you.
Alrighty, folks. Questions, comments? Director Stanford?
Thank you. I always love these reports. I get so much out of them, but could spend hours asking questions. So I'm trying to hold off a bit. On page forty-four, um, there's a table. And one of the line items is the Connected Coast feasibility study. I would just like a few more details about this and wondering if there's been any further action as the communities that are relying on getting this added to their area have been expecting it for a few months now to, to start become active.
Thank you, staff. Let's tackle that.
Thank you, Chair. So this particular item, we have not received any more follow-up from either citywide or the Connected Coast grantor. We were last awaiting for an agreement with the regional district. And to my knowledge, I don't believe anyone who is part of this project has received that except for potentially the Strathcona Regional District, which is one of the main coordinators of this particular project. So we could reach out. I'm not quite sure who to reach out to. But we definitely can. There's definitely a contractor and then there's the actual, the folks funding the project. So they're two different entities.
Director Stanford?
Just as a, a follow-up, is there anything I can do as a political representative to reach out? I know that some communities have, have received their on-land cabling right to their homes. So they may have more information, such as, um, Theda's Island, for instance, which I don't think is Strathcona. I don't think is Strathcona.
If you can pass on information, that'd be helpful because if there is a requirement for the Regional District to disburse the money that's allocated, we would have to undergo a feasibility study and essentially establish a new service. But we don't have all the information to even undergo that conversation with the community. So that would be a first step. And most certainly, if you have a contact, then please forward it along. Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions? Director Lee?
We're going to have a new Zoom process on April 2025 here in the boardroom. Is that correct? Is that date still on? I'm looking on page 42 for everybody.
Corporate officer?
Yes, thank you. So there will be some changes in the boardroom. Essentially, you'll come into the boardroom and you'll be in the meeting. So you won't be logging into Zoom in the boardroom when we get there. People coming in electronically will still be coming in via Zoom. But when we're ready to roll that out, we'll be doing a bit of an orientation with the board before we go live publicly. But the cameras in the room will be finding us.
Thank you. Looking forward to that.
I have a follow-up question on that. This configuration clearly identifies who's who.
Yes, correct.
For the viewing audience.
Correct. One of the main goals of this change is that the public understands who's speaking, so there will be clear identification for the elected officials.
Great. That's really helpful. I read, I did not have a great many questions. I noted the increase in IT help desk tickets. I've helped with that. Increase it. Not surprised. Everything that we get for, you know, computer stuff claims that it's going to be easier and never is. Never. Director Stanford, is your hand still up or? New question. Over to you.
Just as a quick follow-up about IT and then a question about unfilled positions in general. I understand IT has been looking for a security position for well over a year. And I'm wondering if there's opportunity to look at a different model in order to get what was considered a very important role covered. And then also along those lines, I have a note on page 56 about applications and staff positions. I'm wondering, is there a possibility of getting an additional breakdown in these indicators of how long positions have been unfilled? And how many, like getting a sense of where our continued challenges are in filling positions? So that's under the Statistics Key Performance Indicators for Personnel.
Staff?
I can answer, Chair, the one regarding the cybersecurity position, which was approved in 2024. And so that has been a position that we have tried to recruit, I think, five times now. It's a very difficult to recruit position, probably throughout the world, because it's such a high demand. However, we are in the process of recruiting again for that position. And I am to understand that we are, hopefully, will be successful around this time. And the second part of that question was a different model. And so while the position has been vacant, we have used contracted services for certain elements of priority for the Regional District.
Thank you. I'm just going to remind directors, which I had intended to do at the beginning of this item, that we are also providing feedback to staff on what elements of these reports we look at, what we find of particular value. So, Director Lee?
I like them all. I'm looking on page 49, and it says, "Explore opportunities to migrate capital plans to Unit 4." That must be code for something. I was just wondering what that was all about.
Staff?
Yeah, thank you. And again, this is some good feedback because sometimes we just translate our operational plans into these particular reports. So Business World is our, essentially, our financial or enterprise resource planning system. And so in there, we are looking to convert our capital plans that are in very large spreadsheets into our financial system, which would also help with financial reporting because we're doing a lot of that manually when we then translated into our financial
Thank you. Director Bax?
Yeah, back to the chart at the bottom of page 56. It shows the posts and the applicants. And doesn't, as Director Stanford talked about earlier, it'd be interesting to know how long these positions have been open, but it'd also be interesting for me to know how many of them were filled within the last year. And so there's 121 posts from 2024. How many of those were filled? That's a question that I can't find the answer to here.
Anything from staff or shall we?
I think we'll just take that back to, as a process improvement going forward. I think that has been identified in the past, and I think those are important elements into what we're tracking and why we're tracking and if it's useful information. And if it's not useful or is the type of information the board finds valuable, then we'll definitely change it.
Yeah, for me, it just states the 121 posts minus the, how many are filled, and then it just shows me what the, what our gap is.
Sounds good. I was just, follow-up? Director Toth?
Thank you. Sort of. The problem is if we fill a post and a person leaves after a month or two or four, it'll still show as a filled posting. So it's not, it's not a really good metric. I would also be curious to know what metrics are important for us as a board. Like, we're not the HR department. So what's, what statistics are actually important for us at that high level, which, yeah, we'll have to think about.
Hey, to me, I think that knowing what our, what our gap is in, it will help us to understand the stresses that staff are going under.
Thanks, folks. I'm just going to note two things that I always look at on page, there's a whole punch, 52, I think it is. "The value of utility accounts with balances outstanding." I always look at that because that's an indication of financial stress in the community, I think. The outstanding percentage has increased, but it hasn't rocketed. It's, the value is going up because the utility bills are higher, but the percentage increase is still not sort of setting off alarm bells. The other one that I'm curious about is on page 63, and that is the adoption of MySCRD online access. It looks to me like the adoption of that has plateaued. I myself do not have a MySCRD account, so I just wanted to dig a little bit more into this. Is this, is this really valuable for us? Is it saving us money having people use these accounts? Or is it just convenience for the public? Do we want to increase these numbers? Thanks.
So this will be critical as we transition into volumetric billing. And so we're looking to ways that people can pay online and get their utility bill electronically. For instance, I don't receive a paper copy. I only get one online and I pay it online. And so that's essentially the online portal for you to find that information out. We're also looking to transition to ways we can provide information on their usage. And this would be potentially the portal. So those are things that we're exploring as well. So if that would be the case, right now, it's very labor-intensive to do data analysis in the back and then email people. So this would be a format where we could streamline that particular process. And so I would imagine that once we start to implement volumetric billing, especially the mock billing process, and people want to learn about their usage, we may transition and we would probably see a significant uptake. One of the things we are always trying to analyze, though, is our demographic. A lot of our demographic is in the senior population range here on the Sunshine Coast, and typically, that's not an area technology. So we still have a very significant element of our population or users that come to our front desk to pay their utility bills. And so we're going to have to balance that.
Just following up on that, I think I saw stats at one point about how people are paying their bills. I, for instance, get a paper bill, but I pay by direct bank, you know, transfer. So, and I don't have to have in my SCRD account to do that. But this would be more like, say, my hydro account, where I go on, I can pay bills, I can get bills, but I can also look at my usage. So this is, this is the way that we're transitioning. Hopefully, it'll be a little more user-friendly than BC Hydro. Okay. Director Gabius, you haven't spoken yet?
Yes, thank you, Chair. And like, I'm already, I'm already, I'm always interested in communications and how information is given to the public and what people seem to like. And I'm really happy to see that Let's Talk, the Let's Talk pages are, you know, there's more traffic there, which is great. I personally really appreciate being able to direct my constituents to specific pages because a lot of information is housed under specific projects. So I really appreciate the convenience of that. And I guess a question for staff, with this increased traffic on the website and on Let's Talk, have there, has this contributed to maybe reduction in emails or phone calls? Is this like, is this working as a, as a good way to feed public information without the public having to reach out?
Who wants to tackle that one?
So what I can say is there's been no noticeable decrease. Not that we really received a lot of those inquiries by email or by phone, and I think people were regularly going to our website. What I do think, looking at these statistics, is perhaps that our information is reaching a broader sector of the Sunshine Coast population. So I would say that this has, in fact, boosted our ability to engage or inform, provide more information out to the public in this type of format. It seems to be something that is, has been useful for the community in terms of getting their information. I know that this year, on the Communications Work Plan, we are looking at reviewing that tool, and we want to do a more thorough assessment in terms of like what the public thinks about it and if it's something we should continue to do. But so far, these statistics look like it is something that is of benefit.
Okay. Director Stanford?
Just an additional comment, because many of our projects are in Area F, so I do rely on the Let's Talk page quite a bit to get the information out. People that, anecdotally, they do seem to appreciate it, a little bit nervous about the personal information that's required to get in. It's not an anonymous service. But even so, it is just another tool for us to promote to our constituents, and it has been useful for me.
Good to hear. Any further question on the Corporate Services report? Because if not, we will roll on to infrastructure. So infrastructure, starting on page 67. And I'll warm it up with a question on page 68, under Eastbourne water main burying. What are alternative installation methods other than burying a water main?
Thank you. Without going into all the technical specifications that are associated with alternatives, the current main is actually a two-inch pipe in between the trees over land. And so the idea is to bury it. Where, however, the area is, there's a lot of archaeological interest in the area. So we're currently looking at alternatives to, or avoid those areas. And we're not possible to actually keep it over land, but in an insulated, protected casing so that there is no risk of damage or, or less impact of cold conditions as we currently have outside.
Right. Director Stanford?
Thank you. That was one of my questions, and I hope that the Eastbourne community is made aware of any changes to that project, because it does come up quite a bit as to what's happening with those pipes, especially when they crack in the cold weather. I was just going to follow up with the, following to the Eastbourne Grand Water Supply expansion. Is there any further timelines as to when that's going to become active?
Thank you for, thank you for the question. Staff have not restarted to work on that project today yet. It's on a list to get started on in upcoming weeks. Thank you.
On page 68, also the asbestos cement water main replacement. That's in Area E, not F. There are some projects that are not in Area F. And I also had a question on page 70, the residuals. The residuals problem has been haunting us for a number of years now. Is there any progress on Chapman Creek Water Treatment Plant residuals disposal?
Thank you for your question. The conversations with Heidelberg and the National Association are ongoing, and we're currently awaiting some further confirmation from the nation on visibility of some options that were discussed.
Thank you. Directors, what other graphs, charts, et cetera? Director Toth?
Thank you, Chair. The, just a follow-up on the residuals, and it's, it's not about, you know, the Chapman Creek plant specifically, in that residuals disposal seems to be, both in water treatment and wastewater treatment, becoming more and more and more and more of a problem every year, it seems. Like, it seems to be a compounding problem. And I'm just wondering, like, not just for the SCRD, but sort of globally. And I'm wondering if there is something that's, that's changed a number of years ago in disposal regulations or in treatment processes that is compounding, like, that is creating this problem. Like, it's a slow-moving disaster, for sure. But it feels like the problem is getting worse as the years get on across sort of the continent even. And I'm just wondering if staff have any comment to that. Thanks.
Thank you for the, thank you, Chair, for this question. That's a big question to talk about the continent. I will keep it to my answer to the SCRD specifically.
The, there is an, yes, regulations are getting, becoming more strict. But solutions are usually also very cost-expensive. So it's, it's finding, what is the cheapest option? There are options, but spending a million, a half, two million on, if it can be avoided, is, is desirable. And in this case, there might be, there might be solutions, feasible solutions in a couple of collaboration with the mentioned parties that could significantly reduce our capital and operating costs moving forward. And I think instead of spending over a million on a sensor view system, I think those should be further explored before we go to the more expensive ones.
Thank you. Director Bax?
Yeah, looking at the graphs on page 76, I can see that we're, our development referrals is, is up, higher than it's been since 2020, which is great, I think. The, the graph at the bottom, development type, there's one, two, three, four, five different pie pieces, and there's nine different chart colors listed. And they're pretty small, but just, it's a pet peeve of mine that these, that I, I find this chart hard to read.
I agree. I was going to comment on that. I find that chart really hard to read because the, the different colors are almost indistinguishable. I couldn't figure out what order they were in. Yeah. So we, we either need to put a label on the chart or we need much bigger color samples in the, yeah. Yeah. Okay. We seem to be through with infrastructure. I'm going to move on to planning and
Maybe highlight one thing?
Yes. Okay. GM Rosenpil?
It's, it's just for educational purposes. It's on page 81 at the top, Agmont Watersystem. You might, if you look at the graph, you might be wondering why October, November are, why specifically October, November are above the average. Agmont is a small water system, and we had a significant leak, one leak.
Wow.
We could see this on our SCADA system. Our operators could identify that something was wrong. And we had to shut it off immediately when we discovered it. But at that time, it was already intermittently leaking significant amount of water. But this is an example of how a big leak and a small water system combined can actually, if this would have continued, we would have been, it wouldn't have been well.
Yes, visible, but it would also skew the statistics on average use.
Yeah, and would increase further operational costs to even keep the plants going, et cetera.
Director Gabius?
Thanks, Chair. Now, we're looking at these graphs. The one on page 79 that shows that in 2024, the summer demand, well, across the board, but the demand in the summer was higher than the average. Was that because there were no restrictions higher than Stage Two?
Thank you. There were, of course, restrictions because Stage Two wasn't, wasn't placed for most of the summer. But yes, this is primarily the result of not moving into the big elevated, long-term Stage F's.
And I have a question, which is, because there was a recent CBC article on snowpacks across the province, when are we going to measure our snowpack and report it to the public?
Thank you. I think the first report out will be next month.
That's great. The CBC report showed us as, as under, below average. But it's early yet. We could get a ton of snow up in the mountains, I, I would think. So too early to panic. Director Lee?
Thank you, Chair. I'm looking at the Fireflow Action Plan Development on page 72. I can't find my notes. I had to ask the question. But roughly when we, we, we updated the policy, we were going to do a couple of, three things. One was to investigate whether we could have some sort of legal document that would allow us to continue with the 30 instead of the 60 if someone signed a waiver, a legal waiver. And we were then going to do the rest of the whole darn thing, which was to understand where we were, when, and also to figure out who's going to pay for it. Are we doing any of those things or are we just going to? That, my concern is, in, in my area, we have a lot of requests where people want to divide a small lot into thirds, things like that. And I think it's, it's, it's stopped now. We can't do those kind of things for large chunks of our area. So I was just wondering if you could give us an update on, on how that's going. Are you okay with the question? Did I get it close enough? Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair. There are two primary components here of this work. One is a review and updates on policies and procedures on how to, how to adjudicate these files and opportunities to collaborate with developers in cases where major infrastructure upgrades would be required to meet the bylaw standards. And the second part is to do the technical engineering and visibility and costing of what those, those, what those upgrades would be. Both are currently underway simultaneously. And timeline for completion of both is, both will be completed towards, as indicated in the report, by Q3 of this year. The policy piece might be a little bit earlier. And we're, we are acutely aware of the fact that addressing this issue would be very beneficial for the development community.
I have a follow-up question, which is, we have a number of large water projects, like Langdale and reservoirs. Are these projects impacting our ability to get other projects done like this one?
Yes.
It serves me right for asking a yes/no question, Director Lee.
The, from, from the answer, it sounds like we're years away from actually being able to return to what I would call normal in doing those small subdivisions then, unless I'm missing something here. Would that be fair to say?
Thank you. That's an answer that I can provide you. It's, I think it's clear from the fireflow analysis as presented to the board that the SCRD has a substantial issue with fire flows in a lot of areas. So continuing the practices as we had in is maybe not of the best interest in the community because it would only increase those issues. So something needs to change. And, but where the direction, how it's just changing, where it's just changing, will really depend on specific locations. In some locations, it might be just, and it is, the same process as it was several years ago. And in some other areas, things have changed and might change again. And I think what is, what we're striving towards is to create a system where there's actually more flexibility than there is currently to allow some of these developments to move forward. And that's where we're heading towards. But we also need to do it in a way that is very reasonable for the current taxpayers. Okay, thanks.
Okay. Are we done with infrastructure? Can we move on to planning? Planning, starting on page 91. What have directors been reading and absorbing and questioning? Director Stanford?
Thank you, Chair. In this case, it's what I haven't been reading. I was wondering if there'd be an update on what is happening with potential shipbreaking at Hillside, if there's been any further action regarding, I think it was rezoning that they were looking at. And I know activity continues in the water. But if there's anything that I can forward to the neighbors who are interested in what's happening there, thank you.
Staff?
Thank you for the question. There's nothing to read in the report because there has been no further contact from the applicant since that initial expression of interest. Staff, do you continue to monitor the site and are on-site from time to time? Thanks.
Okay, I have one. The, on page 110, there's the bylaw tickets. And there's the value of tickets issued. And then there's the value of tickets collected. And there seems to be a considerable gap between those two values. So does that mean that lots of people aren't paying? What, what, what's the deal on that one?
Thank you for the question. After the, after a certain period of time, a prescribed period of time has elapsed, uncollected tickets are sent to collections. And sometimes that takes a while. So eventually, some tickets are collected. Another approach that can be used is a payment hearing in provincial court. And that tool is used primarily as a way of driving compliance. It's not about financial recovery. It's about creating a situation where, where someone who has contravened bylaws understands that the penalties are real and a, the impetus that a court order can have is added to the pressure to comply. Thank you.
Let me just see if I got this straight. So I'm looking at the chart, the 2024 total. So we issued 21,000 and some in tickets. A third of those were, are shown as collected. A small number were avoided. So does that mean that pretty much two-thirds of the tickets go to a separate collection process?
Thank you, Director, Chair, for the question. In this one case, I believe that that is just a timing piece where there are a number of tickets that are in process. Thank you.
Thank you. Director Gabius?
Thank you, Chair. Looking at all the good work that the Regional Housing Coordinator is doing, it's really impressive, some really exciting things in here. And I'm, I guess I'm wondering how, how, how are some, I'm thinking specifically, like, the feasibility study that they're, for workforce housing, I think, yes. Like, how would things, projects like this be integrated with the SCRD? Like, what, what's the mechanism? Like, how are we going to learn about these things? And potentially, I'm not sure if these would be ready for the OCP renewal? Like, how would this all, how would this work and form planning here at the SCRD?
Staff?
I think, thank you for the question. There are a number of ways that that work will inform what we do in this organization. Starting with perhaps the least interesting, staff, do you have regular meetings with the housing coordinator? And that's an opportunity for dialogue about potential upcoming applications, advice that might go into future policy formation, et cetera. As well, information will continue to flow through, for example, quarterly reports or issue-based reports that come to this or another committee. Additionally, the housing coordinator may appear as a delegation, which happened closer to the end of last year. And then finally, yes, we have mapped a number of interfaces for housing action-related work and official community plan and zoning bylaw renewal. And the timing is designed to enable sort of maximum impact from those inputs, which would be brought forward as a transparent kind of input into the process and, and analyzed. Thank you.
Cool. I have a, another question, which is, a few years ago, the directors got very excited at the prospect of having a system like what's building in my neighborhood that Nanaimo has, where you could go on a map and click and see every building activity that was taking place. And we haven't seen it yet. Is it coming?
I wish I could offer more specifics. I will say that planning staff and information technology staff have worked together on a project plan. It involves adding a module to current software. It is not something to be undertaken lightly. I have been informed by my colleagues. And it is in, it is in our continuous improvement work plan. As directors have commented on earlier reports, there are a number of pressing IT pressures that mean that it's not at the top of the pile currently. Thank you.
Darn. We want the magic bullet. Director Toth?
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to chime in in that we had something similar going on for our planning files in Seashore, sort of development permits and subdivision applications, things like that. And I, I think maintaining that system actually becomes fairly time-intensive. The one that we have in Seashore, like, we're, we're short a couple bodies right now. And it shows because we're not keeping that system up to date. I think it's one of the, one of the things that falls off the task list quite easily when you've got a lot of things to do and not enough people to do it. But the one thing I did want to point out, for those that may not know, is somewhere on our website, I wish I could tell you where I found it. You can actually see a list of, like, building permits issued and things like that. So there is information out there somewhere on our website. If people want to follow along, sort of what's going on in their neighborhood, they can Ctrl+F the document and search it, for example. Thanks.
Thank you. Perhaps the suggestion is that we could have a monthly tip for something that we can do on our website that people may have lost track of or not be aware of. Or, there, there are some cool things on our website. I just have trouble finding them. And it can't hurt to remind all of us and remind the public that we have lots of tools. Director Bax?
Yeah, our mapping tool is quite, quite good, where you can zero in on, on each property and you can see the property values and the, and the zoning and everything like that. I was wondering if, if that would be an area where we could add, if there was any current activity going on. I know it would have to be updated, but.
I, I'm guessing not, but I will go to staff.
Thank you, Chair. So we do routinely report, we provide monthly reports on building permit activity. Those are readily accessible for, under the Building Division webpage. And we do have project pages for major planning projects. Staff's hope Staff's hope was to deploy an automated system because of the amount of care and feeding that's required. We do already have a property, an application management system. It's just not at all user-friendly from a public interface point of view. So the proposed approach was to deploy an automated user interface that would improve our communications. Thank you.
It would. I appreciate, though, that if the information is not up to date, it's almost worse than not having it there. So I don't see any further hands. So I was going to move us on to Community Services Department, starting page one hundred and thirteen. And I'll lead off with a question, which is on page one hundred and twenty-five. There's a mention of the stormwater across Sea View Cemetery. Oh, yeah, that's under emerging issues. And I'm wondering why that's emerging, because the stormwater has been rampaging across the cemetery now for a number of years. So has something changed?
Thank you, Chair. Probably under emerging issues because we're actually, we've surfaced it, pun intended, with Mott. And there is potentially some action to, A, there's an easement that needs to be corrected as it relates to the water flowing through the cemetery. And we do know that Mott has been doing some studies on storm in the area. So it's just emerging because I think the topic is current with Mott. Thank you.
I should add it to my list for our upcoming Mott meeting because they have been redirecting the flow in the ditch along Highway one oh one there to flow away from the cemetery, which is a good thing for one side, but I'm not sure where it's going in the other direction. Director Stanford?
On page one sixty-six, we talk about the Hopkins Landing Project, which I understand has been delayed. Is there any further details as to why it was delayed so late? Or so, so, or quick before it was supposed to start? Like, it was a few days that there were some divers apparently at the dock. So anyway, further details as to why it was delayed when it was? Thank you.
Staff?
Thanks for the question. There's nothing in this quarterly report about it because this, of course, is Q four. And all I can suggest is what's already been released publicly is that we had some divers in the area. We realized that we needed some very site-specific environmental management planning, and that is currently underway. But then we missed the window for the construction, which is most unfortunate. And we can't begin construction again until the new window opens, which is August fifteenth. Thank you.
Thank you. On page one twenty-one, there is a chart about clips, the number of requests received and the number approved. I am, I would be interested in some examples because I get, you know, queries about this from folks in my area. So are there any examples of a clip that was received and approved last year?
Thank you. Thank you for the question. I will also take that under advisement, perhaps, for some additional information in future quarterly reports. Off the top of my head, a good example of a clip that was received and approved, we're up in the ranger station. We received a clip, a community light improvement program for our buildings. I think we put a heat pump in one is a great example. Thank you.
Really good. Thanks. Director Stanford, do you have more? Director Bax?
Yeah, I just noticed, I've been looking at the charts that begin on page one nineteen about the hours booked. And I'm looking at the year-over-year change, and everything is up. All, every, every statistic that's listed here has twenty-twenty-four as an increase over twenty-twenty-three, except for Marianne West. And I was wondering why that is? Why is Marianne West the only place where our numbers, our indicators are down?
Staff?
Thank you for the question, but unfortunately, I don't think I have an answer for you. I don't know why people are not choosing to use that. And if you could just, are you talking about Marianne West sports fields? Just to be specific?
I'm looking at the sports field, the bookings are down. I'm looking at the sport, yeah, the sports field bookings. They're all, they're the only indicator that has dropped from twenty-twenty-three. Everything else is up. Some of them are up like a hundred percent. It's amazing.
Because it's gravel.
Yeah, people, is that the reason?
Yes, okay. Thank you for the clarification through the chair. Well, you know, you're right. The good news is everything's up, but I just would like to remind people, unfortunately, that the years you're looking at were all COVID years. So, you know, we are starting to, and we, in many cases, have actually, were over pre-COVID. So it looks great, but, you know, maybe that's a bit deceiving. But in terms of Marianne West's sports field, I would suggest it's probably one of the least desirable sports fields that we have, which is probably a reason that it doesn't get used a lot. So really look forward to the sports field strategy as that begins to move forward. And, you know, we look at the sports field holistically within the Sunshine Coast, not just within the SCRD, and the possibilities that that holds for us. Thank you.
Thank you for the answer. I think these charts just tell a success story in the Parks Department.
Great. I'm just going to ask one on page one thirty-four, reference to junior hockey. So the first season just finished. Are we going to get a bit of a debrief or a retrospective on how this new departure in the use of our facility has gone?
Thank you for the question, Chair. In terms of how it's impacted our facility, I think that's sort of visible through the rentals. The juniors take a lot of non-prime time. That's when the practice is in the morning, considered non-prime. So our non-prime time numbers are up. In terms of the actual success of the hockey, we have had a recent conversation with the Spur Entertainment Group, and they did suggest that they're interested in coming forward and having a conversation with the board about their season. And so we suggested that they put in a delegation request. So whether or not they do, we'll see. But they'd be best able to speak to the success of their franchise. I do know that their spectatorship is one of the highest in the league, and they're extremely proud of that. You know, sorry that they missed the playoffs, but it was a close race, and I think they've had a really good first year. In terms of their dealings in the building, we haven't had any, which is in terms of enhancements since the seats were installed. So that's, there's no progress or update on that. And I don't believe that they're planning much for this coming season, based on a meeting that we just had recently with them as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Director Toth?
Thank you. Thank you, Chair. I'm just, I appreciate these reports. I appreciate that I learn something every time I read these reports. Talking to Director Lee, I think we were, last night, we were talking. I actually didn't even know that Lyons Field up in Pender Harbor was a regional district field. We talk about it so little, you know, what have you. But looking at the chart on page one twenty, the bookings, to me, look like they're up fourfold. So when Director Bax says things are up a hundred percent for some of them, Lyons Field is up a huge amount compared to twenty-twenty-three. And so it's interesting. I don't know if that's just things coming back to, more back to normal, or if it's getting discovered. Yeah, I just wanted to highlight that because I honestly didn't know we had that field. Thanks.
Thank you. Director Ingster?
Thanks. Yeah, I'll have to look at those figures that Director Toth is referring to regards Lyons Field. It's pretty out of the way. It's a good field, though. It was like nine out of ten originally. I don't know what Director Lee would see as it now. But it was like the best field for a few years, I guess, so I think, but it's still out of the way, near the high school, right? So the numbers, the actual numbers of use, I hope it's being used well because it's a good field that's not used enough, as far as I'm concerned. The, on the issue of the junior team, I'd love to have a conversation with the junior team about GAC use and how well it's working for them and, you know, the minor hockey changes that have had been made to make that building very usable for them. And we know from our attendance there that their attendance is, seems to be near sellout with the limited seating that they have. So I'm not sure how that deals with their overhead. But anyway, it'd be good to have those conversations. So I'm saying through the chair to staff and the chair of the regional district that if we could have that conversation soon, that would be great. Thanks.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay. In that case, we will move on to emergency and protective services. Director Ingster, are you residual? Okay. Chief Michael, did you have anything to add to the report?
Let's try that again. Nothing to add at this time, but happy to answer any questions that I can in the senior manager's absence.
Thank you. Director Toth?
Thank you, Chair. I will get to a question, but first, I just wanted to emphasize that I do appreciate the visuals, the graphics, the photos, when they can be shared, when it's appropriate to share them. I think that's super cool that Amber got a photo with Santa this year on page one seventy-five, one seventy-three. My question is, with the windstorm events having resulted in an EOC, I did field some questions from constituents asking about our use of Voyant, about whether we should have put out a notification to people or, you know, the conversation of when we put out notifications to people using our alert app. And then with the snowstorm that we just had, I had additional conversations with constituents about, you know, how come we didn't let people know to stay home or stay off the roads or what have you? So I guess my question is, do staff have a policy or procedure about when we utilize Voyant? Because I think the last time we had an alert go out, it was about the oil slick on the highway. So not technically our jurisdiction, but it was still worth putting the notification out. So, thanks.
Okay, is that a Chief Michael or is that a CAO? CAO?
Staff, we're working on a policy, and we'll communicate that to the various partners because there is some expectation, we are finding, that the regional district provides some type of coordination. And I think as part of that policy, we'll bring some context to the policy so the public understands when, where, how, what. And I think that's what we have been navigating through these events, whether it's the windstorm and now the snowstorm. So, yeah, as these things emerge, I think the desire for it and the increased expectation of the regional district to be a communication hub as well. So we'll have to explore that further and see how we can manage that, including Voyant.
Director Toth?
Thank you. Just as a follow-up comment, I think that's a conversation that the community needs to be well aware of when we get to the state of having something that we can present and talk about. Whether or not it's appropriate for us to issue a Voyant alert over a snowstorm and, you know, don't drive if you've got bald summer tires is an interesting debate because, you know, there are certain things personally I feel you need to take your own responsibility for. Like, I don't think the government should be telling you, don't drive if you've got bald summer tires. Because if we send out that alert, we'll also have people upset that we wasted their time sending out that alert when they know better. And of course, they don't drive with bald summer tires. So there's a balance there, for sure. And I think we're going to have to work on managing community communications and community expectations when we do bring this forward. Thank you.
I'm just, on that same topic, so after we have an event like this, is there any opportunity for all the agencies to come together and have a bit of a debrief? Like, having the highway shut, closed in numerous places? And it impacted a lot of different agencies and local governments. So do we do that kind of a coordinated debrief?
I'll say yes, that we do. And I believe that Emergency Management Coordinator Nancy Hughes has already undertaken some preliminary discussions related to the most recent events.
Thank you. Director Stanford?
Thank you. First, I'd just like to do a shout-out to all the work that was done during the snowstorm. All levels did their very best. It was great to have the updates from Capilano highways because it then informed me to let local residents know when they could expect support in their area. For the first time, I got kudos from local residents about the work that was being done on their roads. So that's primarily towards Capilano. But one of the things that has come up frequently as a community is a request for funding for local emergency planning. And Emergency Coordinator Hughes did mention that there would be some form of support because we don't do emergency equipment support anymore. But we are, we do have plans that are to be put in place. Communities able and willing, they want to help their neighbors. There were people trapped in their homes for several days over the last week. I want to be able to support this wave of excitement in the community to have plans in place to support their neighbors. And I'm just wondering where we're at with providing that fund? Did I miss something somewhere that that fund was, was or was not coming through, just the status of that? Thank you.
Staff?
I think I'm getting a glance. I'm unfortunately not in a position to be able to provide any insight on that. I will take this away and report back to Senior Manager Bellaby on his return and have a discussion with our Emergency Management Coordinator. So my apologies for not being more prepared for this particular question.
And I too. I would like to have just information for people on where to go when things go bad, and especially if they've been in the house for four, five, or six days and still can't get out. You know, what should they do? What agencies should they contact? Where can they go for help? So, because it really isn't our immediate responsibility, and we certainly don't want to be flooding certain phone lines. Director Ingster?
Thank you. I look forward to the policy on the Voyant system, I think. Got to figure out a way through staff advice to utilize it. We don't want to go to the Chicken Little effect where people start ignoring our emergency sort of dog whistle, I guess, in a sense, that we send out there to, because I'm still concerned about forest fires and what we will do. So it would be good to get that policy. It's interesting, the snow problems that we had, I would, and Director Toth was referring to people not needing warning about proper vehicle use, but I think a lot of our problems were because people were ignoring the warnings of snow, and then they were stuck in spots, probably on our highway that shut it down where people couldn't move. So people weren't, but that may be, that could be an affordability issue as well. You just can't get the winter tires. One of the, I'm just going to say, because we're talking about this, and I'm glad we talk about emergency issues regularly because, as you said, Chair, there are a number of people that, in our community as well, that were probably isolated for a number of days. I'm sure it's worse in one of the rural areas. And I know there was a problem I was hearing about in Director Gabus's area about a particular road that seemed isolated. How do we, how do we help those? do we help those roads, other than the director bugging Capelana Highways or going through staff to get that road cleared? One of the problems I see in our area is because of accumulation and cold weather is sidewalks still not being cleared in some areas. But a lot of, that's a lot of elderly people. So how do we put in a system to help those elderly people? Because a number of them identified needing help, but then I was willing to help, but didn't tell me where they were. Difficult to guess, because I was willing to go, willing to go shovel their sidewalk, just because of the fact that it's difficult to traverse, and now it's turning into ice. I don't know if we're all noticing that, but because of the cold weather, sidewalks, side roads, half-road, plowed, half-plowed roads are now turning into ice. And so that's becoming a problem, because it's staying cold so long. Apparently, it's going to rain this weekend, but it's a big problem right now. I'm seeing it everywhere. So those, staff, how does staff deal with that? I doubt they have a plan that's difficult to deal with ice, but we need to be in consideration of that as we implement policy and discuss it. Thanks.
I'm just going to remind everybody that we have 10 minutes to go until we have, I believe, a luncheon learned session, and we have an in-camera agenda. So I don't think we will solve all the ice and snow problems right at the moment. It was, it was interesting. Director Lee?
Mine was a frivolous question, so I decided to put my hand down.
All right. Director Bax?
I just wanted to inform you that my community is working on an emergency response within the community, and that we're looking, there are members that are looking for granting opportunities from the SCRD.
Okay. And I just wanted to say, appreciated the information about the Emergency Social Services, the ESS program. And would value an opportunity to learn a little bit more about it, because that's a, that's a place where local community members can volunteer. And I just don't, I've never, you know, hands-on, I've never been a volunteer in that program, so I don't really know it really well. And I just, it would be fun. Maybe sometime, we could attend a practice session and just see what the ESS people are doing and become more familiar. Director Gabius?
Just really quickly on ESS, I just looked at, I went online to see about the recruitment process, like how people can apply. And it seems to be an open, just, there's no drive, like no specific time application deadlines for that. So I'm just wondering, are we, is there a certain capacity? Is there a certain number of volunteers that we accept, or is it just like as many as possible? Like, should I, like, should we, as a board, like, try to get more people to apply? Or, like, is there a need for more members at the moment, I guess is the question?
Steph?
Well, that's another great one that I, I'm not sure I can answer super well. But what I, what I hear, the takeaway is providing a better overview of the program. And I think from that, we would then drive, you know, recruitment efforts and things if needed. I know that there has been some efforts as of late to enhance that team, and I know that they are quite happy with the results of such. But I would imagine that, you know, as our local fire departments and supporting programs, you know, always looking for volunteers as well. So I'm hopeful that the process is easy. And the other thing, you know, wanting to plug that, you know, 72-hour preparedness as well, which is part of our Emergency Support Services team, you know, and I'm hearing a lot of emergency preparedness, isolation, let's make sure that our constituents are prepared for a number of days in isolation in any unfortunate event.
Thank you. Director Lee?
I think I just, we'll chime in anyways. In my area, after the power was out for like three days straight in this cold weather, and the older people were stuck in the house because of the snow on top of it, they were getting to where they were desperate for some assistance. We're starting to organize the community to go haul them out of their homes. But the ESS probably should be what we look for for that. So when we're doing the ESS, maybe we want to consider something like that. I know if it's a house fire, they respond immediately, because they're called. But with something sporadic like this throughout the community, who calls and where? You know, that's, that's the question. I know you don't have an answer, but I just thought I'd mention that.
Yep. Lots of questions, no answers yet, but we'll get there. And, yeah, and I wanted to understand more about what ESS does, too, because do you need to be able to lift 20 kilos? Or are you behind a desk operating a computer, or what, you know, what's involved? So I think we need to move on to the next item in our agenda, which is, no communications, no new business. I would like a motion to go in camera, that the public be excluded from attendance at the meeting in accordance with Section 91A and K of the Community Charter. Moved, seconded, all in favor? Okay. In camera we go. Connie's still, nope, she's gone. Okay. And welcome back to the very tail end of the committee of the whole meeting of Thursday, February 13, 2025. Do I see a motion to adjourn? Moved, seconded, all in favor? We are adjourned. Thank you.